All right, good afternoon, everyone. I am Jason Winston, Chair of the Community Development Human Services Committee. I call our regular committee media to order for Tuesday, July the 12th, I mean, July the 15th, 2025. I'm joined by my colleagues. To my far left, we have Councilmember Bakhtiari, Wes Morland, and Norwood. This does constitute a quorum. So at this time, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Wes Morland, if you please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
Colleagues, you've had an opportunity to look at the meeting minutes from our last committee meeting, so I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? A second by Bakhtiari, if you please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The minutes are approved.
Thank you. This does take us to the public comment section of our agenda. I would just remind everyone, you have three minutes during public comment, and then we'll gently remind you if you get close to the expiration time. Our first speaker today is Helen Delilah Williams.
I knew it, I was excited about that. Praise God for my mother for naming me Delilah. Good afternoon, my name is Helen Delilah Williams. I'm originally from the Vine City community. I've been in my home for forty-plus years. I would like to bring to the Community Development Human Services Committee about a situation going on, not just in my community, but in the city as a whole. Daniel Bridges, Fred Hanna and Associates, Robert Winters. These are lawyers and a debt collector agency. They are a debt garnishment puppy meal. They come after the community. They steal your information. They impede on your privacy. They steal your medical records. They conform you and present you to the credit world and pretend they are you. But what happens with all that information? They use your information and come after you in reference of debt. It can be something way back yonder, but as long as they have your information, they are a threat to the community. They are harassing our elders. They're coming after us, creating debt in order to consume the livelihood of the address. And once you get in the realm of their clutches, they can do whatever to you because solicitors, debt collectors have no heart. All they want to do is see the dollars grow. So I wanted to bring to the city of Atlanta and the council that Fred Hanna and Associates are already in trouble in Cobb County. I want you guys to be aware of this company. They are bullying, not just mellowing people, everybody. Everybody, and no one is calling their name out in the city of Atlanta. Fred Hanna and Associates, Daniel Bridges in downtown Decatur, Robert Winters. These companies come after you. NCO Portfolio, Asset Care, Asset Acceptance. These are debt collector companies, and they get your information, and they come at seniors, college, anybody. I'm gonna start coming to community meetings and speaking on these individuals because you guys don't know about this. Cobb County has sanctioned them, has said, what are you doing? How are you going about getting this information? Are you going about it properly? How you know you got the right person? Just because my name says Helen, and there's a D, and there's a Williams, how do you know you have the right person? But what they do, they go and dig and make you that person. That's not right.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Our next speaker is Henry Jordan, and we've been joined by Councilmember Andrea Boone.
Give my praise to God to everyone that's here. And I will bless them that bless thee, and curse him that cursed thee. And in these shall all families of the earth be blessed, Genesis 12, chapter 3, verse. God promised to make Israel a great nation, to bless the seed of Abraham, to give him a great name, to make him a blessing, to bless those who bless him and curse those who curses him, to give him the promised land. I need Jesus' blessings, what about you? Let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father which is in heaven, Matthew 5, chapter 16, verse. You are the light of the world, describes the essential mission of the Christians to the world. Jesus gave me His gift for the protection of His people. How many need Christ's blessing? I know I do, what about you? For He did put His life in His hand and slew the Philistine. And the Lord wrote a great salvation for all Israel. Thou sawest it, and is rejoiced. Wherefore then wilt thou sin against innocent blood to slay David without a cause? Romans 17:19, chapter 5, verse. God gave David the power against a giant boasting about his power. Man boasts about their power, like James Griffin and others, but Jesus' power is greater than our power. But whosoever shall deny me before men, him will I also deny before my Father which is in heaven, St. Matthew 10, chapter 33, verse. Therefore, a single act of denial does not make one unworthy of being a disciple, but a refusal to confess Christ at all eliminates one from being a true follower of Jesus Christ. I need my blessing, so I seek to obey and glorify Jesus, the true Blesser. Can't no one protect us like Jesus can? We living on His time. He gave it to us. It's what we owe Christ to seek righteousness, justice, not injustice. We need the power to obey Jesus Christ. I know I do. I want to speak it in your life, but not in my life.
Thank you. Our next speaker is C. Grubbs. You have three minutes.
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon.
Yes, sir. I'm here to speak on the corruption within the Atlanta Housing Authority that I've experienced with the leadership of Ms. Terry Lee. So I was told that I need to do a research for July 4th, well, before the 5th of 2023. I provided that. I received a call from a Ms. Patricia Goldmilling, an email stating that I would need to do the research that I already done. She was requesting information that did not pertain to my family. When I tried to reach back out to her, a couple of days later, I was not able to reach her. I then contacted her supervisor, Ms. Tracy Jones. She stated that Ms. Goldmilling was no longer with the Atlanta Housing Authority October 31st. No, during the end of October, she told me that she would have the information rectified or whatever. So I received a phone call on a Sunday from someone stating that they were from Atlanta Housing Authority, requesting the same information that I had already provided. Long story short, going forward, I received an email from Ms. Bracenia Ingram stating and requesting the same information, and I informed her that I've already sent the research and everything that was needed in order to be in compliance. They stated that they don't have any of my information and that I had someone fired. So I didn't know who got fired or anything like that. And due to these actions, certain actions, they was not submitting my information, and I'm thinking maybe because they think I got somebody fired, I don't know. But when I made the complaint regarding the information, I was told that if I don't do a research that I would be terminated. I received this information from the actual homeowner. So I contacted AHA to ask why didn't I receive a letter of termination from the program instead of me receiving that information from the actual homeowner? I got hung up on, and I later received an email stating that I understand that my time is over, but if I could have somebody address the issue because it's more than...
If you want to hang around, Ms. Grubbs, we'll have someone come get your contact information. Maybe we can try to help you connect with the right person.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have my children here.
I'll have somebody from my staff come up pretty quickly. So thank you. Next, we have Christine Hassel. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Christine Hassel. I am the Chattahoochee Program Project Manager for the Trust for Public Land. We are a national nonprofit working to connect everyone to the outdoors by advancing equity, health, and climate resilience in the communities in which we serve. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I am here in support of the resolution in front of you, 25-r-3661. It's before this committee and Atlanta City Council, which proposes a $200,000 donation from Trust for Public Land to advance planning and conceptual design for the Atlanta segment of the Chattahoochee Riverlands Trail and Chattahoochee Brick Company Memorial Park and Green Space. TPL has a long history, with a long and successful history in Atlanta from assembling the land for the MLK National Historical Park to helping shape the Atlanta Belt Line through our 2005 Emerald Necklace Study. We've been committed to preserving and enhancing the city's public spaces. That vision became a reality with projects like Historic Fourth Ward Park, where we helped assemble parcels to pull that park together. And this year, we published a follow-up study, the Emerald Necklace, to celebrate the 20 years of progress along the Belt Line along with lessons learned over that course of time. Our work with the city continues through multiple initiatives. Our Urban Parks Initiative brought Cook Park to life. Our School Yards Initiative is transforming ten schoolyards into vibrant shared spaces for students and neighborhoods. And through our Park Score Initiative, Atlanta has risen from 51st in the nation to 21st in the nation, its highest ranking to date. For over thirty years, we have been working to protect the Chattahoochee River, conserving 19,000 acres and 81 miles of riverfront in partnership with the city, Cobb County, ARC. We helped to develop the Chattahoochee Riverlands Study, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. It's a bold vision to connect twenty cities and seven counties through one continuous public realm. Last year, TPL partnered with the city of Atlanta to open its first public access point to the Chattahoochee River at Standing Peachtree Green Space. And the city is currently building its first stretch of the Riverlands Trail set to open next year. Through the Riverlands and Chattahoochee Brick Studies, Atlanta has a very unique opportunity to lead in delivering a bold equitable vision for the river, one that also strategically positions the city to compete for significant public and private funding to bring this vision along Atlanta's riverfront to life. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Our last speaker for today is Nikki Bugs. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. All right, so what else can we do from the landmark condominium, the homeowners? What else can we do to get you to step in and help? The city, the state, the government have completely failed us as homeowners. That is the truth. And at this point, the seniors and homeowners are living in fear, total chaos, and autocracy. That's where we are. Due to Airbnb investors and the building turning into a hotel motel-type situation, a come-one, come-all, free-for-all. There's no protection for us, and no one's thinking about where we are. The building used to be a premier building, as we all know. We've all discussed that, and we said that multiple times. So I'm unclear what it is that the building has not been preserved and protected. I'm unclear what it is going to take for someone to finally step up for the homeowners of the landmark. There are very few of us left, and it appears to be the intention to get us out of the building. So when I've mentioned to you several times, if I walked in the place and I did something heinous, for example, shooting up the place, then I would have your attention. I didn't mean that, I only meant that metaphorically. I did not mean that I'm actually going to do it. I'm in sound mind, body. I'm mentally okay. But it takes measures such as that, some horrible things, for people to really recognize what's happening. We don't know what else to tell you. We had a fire January 17th. We could have died. We could have died had the fire trucks not been across the street. We had CO2 leaks, mold ones, all the way up until January of this year. Our elevators are constantly breaking down only because the building's just not designed for hotelship. When we came to you four years ago, we asked then, and nobody did anything. No one said anything, no one stood up to help us. And so now here we are. You're going on vacation, you'll be gone for two weeks. I don't remember the last time I had a vacation. I don't remember the last time I had a free peace of mind due to this circumstance. I don't remember the last time I breathed unautocratic air in a building that I live in. At a particular point in time, I realized, you know, as I said, this is coming in, and there's a lot of money to be had. But is it lives over profit? Is it? Is it our property? At a particular point in time, somebody's gotta stand up. It has to happen. We have seniors in the building. If you don't think about me and care about me, please think about them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thanks to everyone who signed up today for public comment. That does conclude that section of our agenda. Next, we're at presentations. Today, we have two. Our first presentation is a quarterly update from In-Town Cares, and we'll welcome up Mr. Brad Schwers.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to present to this committee. Let me make sure I've got... Here we go. My name's Brad Schwers, Executive Director of In-Town Cares. We are focused on food insecurity and homelessness here in the city of Atlanta. We've talked in the past about our approach to homelessness, which is a housing-first approach, and typically has five phases to it. We help engage people who are experiencing homelessness, particularly unsheltered homelessness. We enroll people in our program. We help them navigate through the steps of obtaining documentation, qualifying for housing, help people move into housing, and then support them as they are in housing. We have talked in the past, and the city council has supported our place-based outreach and navigation work in now districts 1, 4, 5, and 6. Councilmember Boone, we're excited to work in districts 10 and districts 11 coming up as soon as we can get that mobilized. And we, in addition to the place-based work, we have a PATH team. This is a state-funded team that works with people experiencing homelessness who have major mental health issues. And then the program I want to talk a little bit about today is our partnerships program. So we currently partner with four organizations that we have funding and programmatic partnerships with, the Central Outreach and Advocacy Center, the Church of the Common Ground, Clifton Sanctuary Ministries, and new partnership in Buckhead with four faith congregations. So In-Town Cares, we feel like we do great work, but we can't do everything. So these partnerships are crucial as we address local needs in different neighborhoods around the city. And really, the work that is funded by the city council very much grew out of this neighborhood, this partnership work, which is rooted in trust and relationships. It involves consistent, long-term engagement to build that trust and to share resources and information as we serve our neighbors experiencing homelessness. In addition to partnering in our work, one of the things that we do with our partners is work on communication, so posting about each other's work to our different networks and doing a series of trainings and information sessions with congregations, local community groups, et cetera, about best practices, local trends, state trends, national trends, and things like that. So as we, and with all of our partnerships, we have specific goals, outcomes, measurements, and reports that we do. So let me talk a little bit about our four different partnerships here. We've got our... So each of our partnerships involves getting together, aligning with our mission to end homelessness, and has a funding partnership that places one of our case managers onsite with another partner agency to do our work and provide support services. Our first partnership I want to highlight is with the Central Outreach and Advocacy Center. Folks might be aware of their work. They've been around since 1980, based in the basement of Central Presbyterian Church right across from the Capitol. We have placed our case manager, Lillian, as part of their work there. They have great strengths in consistency, their services. They offer a respite for people throughout the day where they can get their mail, get their documents. But one of the things that they were lacking is the long-term case management and navigation work. So we got together two years ago to embed one of our case managers, Lillian, in their work, which has been a huge success, building on their strengths and our strengths to do better work in the community. Our second partnership is with the Church of the Common Ground. Church of the Common Ground, if you're not familiar, is an Episcopal parish that has no walls. They exist in various spaces around downtown Atlanta, and they are a church like every church and has prayer and Bible study and times of fellowship. And it happens to be made up mostly of people experiencing homelessness. So Reverend Senator Kim Jackson founded this, helped to start this partnership about three, two and a half years ago. I know Senator Jackson from our time at Canler School of Theology, and we were able to embed one of our case managers, Matthew Reed, into Church of the Common Ground, where Matthew, who happens to be a Christian himself, and part of his Christian faith is to worship and to serve people who are in need of services. So he's a longtime case manager in the city, and so we've been building on the strengths of Church of the Common Ground, which includes spiritual support, a low-barrier approach. They meet outdoors, so if it's raining, the pastors meet people outside when it's raining and really meet people where they are. And so with that, we bring that relationship-focused case management, navigation, and expertise. And I'll say that this Church of the Common Ground partnership was really the basis that grew, that we grew our East Atlanta partnership that started about two years ago as well. This idea of being in relationship with folks and from those relationships, doing the hard work of outreach and navigation support. Third, we have a partnership with Clifton Sanctuary Ministries. For those not familiar, Clifton Sanctuary Ministries grew out of Clifton Presbyterian Church in the Lake Clare neighborhood. It was the first homeless shelter in a faith community in the city, founded in 1979. They serve eighteen men experiencing homelessness out of their facility. And the strengths of their program are compassionate support. It's a small shelter, it's not a large facility, and so it's very intimate. They provide those wraparound services. From there, we have our case manager, Pierre Angeli James, who does work with navigation, exit planning, and coordination with other services. And finally here, as I mentioned, a Buckhead partnership. So about a year ago, we were approached by folks from Peachtree Road United Methodist Church, who had been doing various services throughout the week, meals, martyr cards, really quite an incredible kind of case management program, working with a number of folks. But they also understood that they are a faith congregation, they're not trained social workers. So reached out to us and to see if we might be interested in a conversation. As it turns out, Peachtree Road United Methodist had been in touch with three other congregations, the Cathedral of St. Philip, Cathedral of Christ the King, and Second Ponce de Leon Baptist Church, all of which were focused on supporting their neighbors experiencing homelessness, but really not knowing how to move beyond kind of a meal and a Band-Aid approach and really wanted to be a part of transformation. So out of those conversations came a partnership where Tanya Davenport, one of our case managers, our lead case manager, who's a peer support specialist herself, was able to join that work there, meet out of those different locations throughout the week, and do the work of professional case management, coordination of services, navigation, and getting people moved on to housing. So from that initial work, which just started in March of this year, so we're about four months in. Tanya regularly engages with about fifty people who are experiencing homelessness. She's enrolled sixteen folks into our program. She's already placed two people into permanent housing, one of whom was reconnected with family on the Ivory Coast. And so we were able to connect with family in the Ivory Coast, take this person to the airport, make sure they got on a plane, and was reconnected with family. She also has, Tanya has twelve clients who are document-ready. This means people who have been through coordinated entry and have all of the documentation that they need, which is a birth certificate, a social security card, state ID, as well as what's called the HUD McKinney Form, which is a disability verification form. So she's got twelve other folks who are ready for housing as soon as housing becomes available, and two other of her clients who continue to work towards getting those documents. So in addition to direct services, a lot of what we do is provide referrals and warm handoffs. Referrals are the kind of thing that everyone talks about, but we're not going to refer our way out of homelessness. People need to get... People need to get connected, have trusting relationships with mental health providers, dental health providers, substance abuse treatments, and those kinds of things. So Tanya, who has deep connections in the community, is able to make those referrals and get folks connected. Finally, as Mayor Dickens often says, Atlanta is a group project. Through our partnerships, In-Town Cares has come together to better serve our neighbors experiencing homelessness, working towards an end to homelessness for folks especially who are sleeping outside. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the committee and am open to any questions folks might have.
Thanks, Brad. We appreciate the quarterly update. We'll go to some questions from my colleagues. We'll start off with Councilmember Bakhtiari.
I would say less of questions and more just immense gratitude. I actually think we should take a moment to give Brad and In-Town a round of applause because of the extraordinary work. And I just want to give In-Town a major shout-out for Wheat Street because you all had case managers out there almost every morning for a month leading up at 5:00 AM, working with folks, folks that they'd already had a long time of relationships with, who are finally allowed to lead on. And because of you all, we were able, you were able to get everyone their paperwork, get them document-ready, get them medical attention. You were out there every day, were able to actually move them into beds so we can work on getting them more permanent housing. But everybody there has a bed, and that has never been done in Sweet Auburn before. And that is life-saving work, and I'm so grateful to you all for that. And the other piece is, I think, this case manager program that we got to pilot in East Atlanta, I've said it a million times, I'll say it a million more, I believe it's the model to follow. I believe that this is a model that would make Atlanta the number-one city in the country to tackle homelessness in the most effective and compassionate way possible. And I really look forward to working with you all and Councilmember Boone to really build out the Southwest program because I am dedicated to doing that. And we're going to make it happen and model it after East Atlanta, so we actually have targeted locations, which is what makes you all so successful. And I also, of course, want to thank Shatika Ellison for working with you all. But I just want to say that, I will say again, that in my opinion, In-Town leads the way, and the retention rate of your case managers and the care they put into these programs and the care they put into these people is how we affect long-term change. So I just want to say thank you. And this is a partnership that I look forward to continuing to build for many years to come. So thank you, Brad.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Boone?
Thank you, Brad, for that wonderful presentation. We are so looking forward to greeting your team in Southwest Atlanta, districts 10 and 11. We have a specific location that we would love for your team to look at. It is near 2636 ML King Jr. Drive, and members of our unhoused population have built a small home there. It's not erected very sturdy, so we know that it's not going to last a very long time. But we want to try to move them as quick as possible in some type of better situation. Of course, it's just shelter, no water, no nothing. It's, and it looks a little dangerous. So that's near 2636 ML King. If your team would check on that for us as well. Thank you.
We certainly will, and I'll be back in touch about that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Sorry. Brad, just also, would you mind shooting Councilmember Boone and I an email after this so we can go ahead and set a meeting so we can start building that programming?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll just reiterate comments from Councilmember Bakhtiari. I know that our case manager in District One, Deja Stokes, anytime I'm either emailing her or calling her about a certain area that I'd like for her to go check out, she's either already there, leaving, or, you know, has several contacts there already. So just able to see how this program is working in my district just speaks volume to the people on your team, and so we're just so appreciative to have that. I'm glad to see that we are expanding those, this initiative to other areas of the city like in Councilmember Boone's district, just because I've been able to see, you know, what my next-door neighbor over here in East Atlanta has been able to accomplish with her district, and I'm glad we're starting to see the progress in my district as well. So just kudos to you and your team. Thank you for doing that. And let us know how we can help with some of these partnership programs. I know Matthew's out in Grant Park, right on Cherokee in the morning, so I know he's part of that organization that's helping there, Episcopal Church on Cherokee there. So, you know, I see them out in the field all the time and just want to just reiterate our thanks for them, so appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and appreciate your support as well.
All right, thank you. Our next presentation is the Metro Atlanta Land Bank Quarterly Update. We'll bring up Mr. Chris Norman.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
Happy to be here. This actually, I think, has been over a year since we had our last, last update. So we have a lot of information, but I'm just going to breeze right through it so you can pause me if you need more detail, but just going to give you kind of an overview of what we've been, been going up to. So for all this, a little bit of education as well, so some of this is takeaway information also, since I know it's a public meeting. So basically, our land bank is a quasi-public entity that was created over 30 years ago. Just hit our 30th anniversary, and it's a tool for just converting public land, land to a productive use. So, and I always want to point out that we do not have eminent domain authority or tax authority. That rests with you to exercise that right. So, and our mission statement is really just to work with our partners to return non-productive property to create market and affordable house, and I do highlight that, that's a key consideration now, public space and new jobs. And we do have the ability to extinguish taxes. That is something that is one of the unique powers of the land bank. Any land bank in the state of Georgia can do that. I do want to point out that, just to flag it, that one, for you, the sanitation class action settlement has impaired our ability to extinguish taxes just due to a technical glitch. We were in conversation with the city attorney about this, so just stay tuned. That is something that we're flagging that will probably need some additional action by council to help remedy that, that situation there. So, but as we exercise our powers, this is what we all want, is this is what we call the utopia, right? We have all code-compliant property, everything is produced in taxes, everything's occupied. We create green space, which you heard about earlier, and then everything is vibrant and safe. That's what we really want to always say, we want to work ourselves out of business, and this is what we ultimately want to end up doing, for we don't have to deal with these types of properties that are an issue. So what is the land bank up to? What does our portfolio look like? Right now, we manage almost 275 properties under the control by the land bank. Based on the tax assessment in the last year, there's about $30 million worth of real estate that is controlled by the land bank for a variety of purposes. Primarily, they fall in these three categories. We own properties straight out by the land bank, some we hold on behalf of other parties, which I'll go into during the presentation, to help them facilitate that. We actually did, I came from a groundbreaking this morning, Sylvan Hills Two. That was something we held for 13 years, actually, until ANDP, we're Atlanta Housing, with Radiant, with Artici, a lot of other folks. That ended up taking over five, six years to come to fruition. So we are engaged in projects that take a long time, but it does, is beneficial to them. This kind of gives you a portfolio pie chart of what we own. You can see most of the property, the blue is our, our property, but the green is, so we have Westside Future Funds property, Invest Atlanta, we manage their inventory, and we also manage properties for ANDP as well. And we're actually working on some additional land banking arrangements with Police Foundation and with the Stewart Center as well. So those will be coming online in our portfolio as well. To manage this property, since we are not part of the city, we're not part of the county, we're an adjunct authority, we don't have sovereign immunity, so we actually insure our own property. So just kind of give you a sense of that. So we spent about $30,000 on insurance past fiscal year, and it's also, we spent over $100,000, $125,000 roughly to maintain the property. So just kind of give you a sense of the scale, what we do, and that was almost nine, 600 services they'll provide. So we were very active. So transactions. The Invest Atlanta worked with us a few years now, in 2003, actually gave us a $6 million line of credit. One of the things we've always been trying to seek is acquisition funding. So we leveraged the Housing Opportunity Bond to create, the first time they actually created a line of credit. Typically had been used for gap funding and things of that nature, but this is a line of credit that we use to do strategic acquisitions, particularly in the areas focused by the administration, Hollowell, Hamilton, Thomasville, downtown areas that we were kind of, kind of trying to focus on. So what have we done with that? So the first acquisition, we bought almost 11 acres off of Bard Road, Hamilton, the intersection there. That's going to be the end of that, across the street would be a BRT facility from Marta. And so we're working on that. That was $1.3 million, we bought that from the YI WCA. There's actually a project right next to it, there's a Lytec project that they're working on. So here, there can be over 100 houses or properties that come out of this development, and so that is underway. We did meet with the community, we did a charrette with them, the mayor's Housing Innovation Lab and Housing Office, Matt Belstow was part of that before he left. And we kind of went with them and got their feedback in terms of what they wanted to see and what they wanted to do. So that is in place, and we will be issuing an RFP in conjunction with the city to identify development partners for that particular one. In the meantime, we maintain it and provide insurance on that. Follow-up acquisition, Thomasville Heights, McDonough Boulevard, across from Forest Cove. We actually bought 5.3 acres for $1.4 million. So we bought that property. That is something that is actually literally adjacent to Atlanta Housing Site that they're working on right now. So it's going to be a nice set of kind of bookended projects working right there. This deal is unique. It is going to be a ground lease transaction, it's the first one we've done. It's with a developer that's doing a Lytec deal. It's going to be a 65-year affordability period here. They were awarded a, they were awarded 4% by DCA. They're going to wrap that up and be formally funded on that come December. And so that's, you can see the unit mix there, 18 units would be 80%, 47 units would be 60%, and 36 units would be 50% AMI. And the land bank will hold that land. We basically lease it to them for $100, and that's basically the way Lytec deals and the way you have to do in order to have these transactions work out. And so that is something that we're excited about having in place. So that's, that's working. We also had a chance to, when the city council passed the zoning for Ashton Woods, for Park View, which is across from the former Westside Park, now the Shirley Clark Franklin Park, they're building townhomes. And actually, the city council said, well, if you build that, 21 of them have to be affordable. And so the way that was to work is that they designated these, these segments of which the affordability. Now, there was a time limit for how long you had to sell these, these properties. The initial thought was these would be sold under the land, the land trust model, and so Atlanta Land Trust was basically enlisted to do this, but they only had a certain period of time to sell them. If they didn't meet their timeframe, then those would revert to market. And so what we decided was, well, the land bank will serve as the backstop. If the land trust cannot get the properties sold in time, we would go in and buy them, and that locks in that affordability price. And so we actually bought seven before they expired. Two have been sold under the land trust model. We just sold the third one, and these have all been sold to income-qualified folks. Invest Atlanta has been great with their down payment assistance. We're layering all this type of work here. What happens, the line of credit gets paid off, but a portion. So we bought the properties at the 120% level, which is to say we bought, I think it's $420,000 per unit. The, we're selling them for 280 to 330. So that gap is being absorbed by that line of credit. And so that would be forever, parting with that piece of property, and it's going to burn off in 10 years. So that's how we're able to create more subsidy and bring the prices down to get people in. But if we were, if not for the land bank stepping in and buying those properties, they would have gone back to the market, and nobody would have had this opportunity to do that. So we're basically actively marketing those properties. So anybody on, within my voice, if you're interested in a townhome property, and you think you're income-qualified, you have to be income-qualified. Go to our website, call our office. We're marketing those right now. They're on MLS, so if you have an agent, tell them to go look for them right now, okay? And so that's something that we're working with right now. So this is a unique, creative way to use that type of a line of credit from Invest Atlanta. So that's transactionally what we've been working on. You may remember that we actually met with Atlanta Public Schools about an idea to say, we have vacant properties, right? And sometimes they sit there, if you've seen plywood, it gets weathered, it starts turning gray, looks a little unsightly. We said, this would be a great idea to work with the school system to let their kids actually paint the boards. And so we actually worked with the school system. Our vendor took the boards, they measured them, they took them to the schools, the kids actually painted the boards, and then we got $20,000 from the community foundation to actually, for the paints and the paintbrushes and all this other kind of stuff, and to pay the contractor. And these were the properties you see listed here on Boone, Delbridge, Harrison, and Sunset. And they basically turned into this. So this is actually the children's art that is now displayed on the properties. And so if you go by, they get to see their art, and it's a great way of interim maintenance for these properties until they basically are turned into something that's occupied. So we thought this was a cool idea, the way to basically kind of bring something to the community and allow them to participate in that. We also are working with the administration, this started under Mirror Bottoms, with, there's a book of demolition liens the city maintains. We've started foreclosing on those liens to take the property into inventory. The land bank has been designated as a recipient of those properties. We're in phase three of that. The first 150 parcels were, six apartment complexes were taken down, Allison Courts, ML King, Bolton Road. So we took down these apartment complexes, brought them into inventory. We did extinguish taxes. We extinguished one and a half million dollars worth of taxes because they hadn't paid taxes either as well. Because just because they're demolished, if everybody in the audience, you know, doesn't mean that the ownership has changed. The owners are still that private party, and some of them don't pay taxes either. So we had to extinguish the Lincoln taxes for that, which is why I brought up the point about the issue we're running into with the sanitation legislation. So we've moved from the multifamily sites, we're now getting single-family because that is something imperative we need for single-family land to build houses. And now we have shifted to the land bank has now taken the lead of this project, and now we have tied a lawyer, we do have an internal general counsel, she's working on this. And so we're basically systematically cleaning these, bringing these properties under control, and we're going to basically go out to the marketplace via RFP to identify developers to do single-family primarily development. And so we're working close with Innovation Lab and with the Housing Department out of the mayor's office to do that. Sheriff from Marshall D., you may have heard about this, this is a longstanding set of properties we've had for a long period of time, but we never acquired a title on this. We didn't have the funds to do it. But the city council, thank you, gave us $400,000 to actually hire attorneys to do this. So we're actually, the first 15 have been cleared, they're on our website, they're available for purchase now for two purposes. You can either do affordable housing, or you can do a market purchase. If you do affordable housing, you get a discount, but it comes with requirements. And so we're going to enter a contract with you. If you buy for market, you're going to pay full freight on that. And so our preference is for affordability, but in lieu of having someone to buy for their purpose, we do also want to get them back on the market and generate tax increment for the city, the county, and the schools. So those are out there as well. There are metroatlantalandbank.org is our website, you can see all the properties listed there. Additional things that have been impacting Land Bank, Center for Community Progress, who's a national nonprofit focused on vacant properties, created a cohort for communities of color. They were trying, developers of color, they were trying to basically bring more developers into the fray that have basically been sidelined. And so we actually worked with them last year for this project, and that has just concluded, and we've been involved in that. So operationally, you would say, how do we get all this done? Well, this is our organizational chart, you'll see all the blue boxes, those are the actual full-time employees. The green boxes are the people we hire on a contract basis to help us out. So you kind of see, we're a small organization, but we do have virtual capacity to do quite a bit. We do have outside attorneys that help us to do this. This year, I do want to point out, we hired our first paralegal. So we now have a paralegal and a general counsel, which gives us a lot more capacity to do. So without all of this, we would not have been able to do those projects I just mentioned before. We try to be transparent, and so we have social media that we put out all of this type of activity out here. So we have LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram, these are all the links to those. So if you want to take a look at those, or you want to follow us, feel free to do that and see all the great stuff that's happening with your land bank. Your land bank is also, just pointing out, was the fourth land bank created in the United States. It is the, there are over 350, so you have the old guard land bank. So the Visionaries of Atlanta created this way back before anybody else. And so Atlanta is often looked to to see, well, what are we doing? So people ask us often to come speak and do all this. So we, we, this just kind of gives you a sense of some of the things we've been done. So we, we, this just kind of gives you a sense of some things we've been done. There was a national webinar on equitable development. Terrica Bashir is our program director. She participated in that. I just mentioned the beautification project. That was of such interest that they did a national webinar on that. So they could understand how we did that with the school system. And we did it alongside with the Dr. Erickson. She's the director of art for the school system. And then also, I, as the former president of the State Association of Land Banks, actually taught, teach a class annually on land banking one-on-one for the GIC program. And so I did that again last year. And then I also got to teach class last year. So University of Georgia asked me to come and speak to undergraduates and graduates in the urban planning department. And so I did that the same day. Augusta, Georgia asked us to come down and talk to them about how to run efficient land banks. And so we went there, kind of give them some of the experiences we've had here in Atlanta. So you're getting exposure from Atlanta that's branching out to jurisdictions beyond just here. So I do want to just let people know that. State Association, there are 30 landbanks now in the state of Georgia. There were 10 when I took over as president of the Land Bank Association. And that was in 2012. And so in this, we have a summit now and all of this. So I, one thing that did happen at the summit is that we provided a tour of all our participants throughout the city. So they got to see our projects in person. We also elected a new president. So I served as president for 11 years. I was the founding president. So I stepped down. So I'm no longer in that capacity. So we're in great hands. Allison, who's out of Savannah, now runs that. And so I do, I'm proud to say, we grew the number of landbanks from 10 to 30, 31 landbanks. And so this is catching on across the, across the state in terms of what people see us doing. And they want to do it in their jurisdictions as well. Governance, we have seven board members here. You see four are nominated by Atlanta, three by the county, Fulton County. You see one highlighted in yellow. Her term's expired, but she's basically in interim status until we obtain a new designate. So we'll be working with the mayor's office to identify a person to come in and take that role from Ms. Howard. She is currently serving there. And the bylaws and the statute allows her to continue to serve until she is replaced money. So financial resources. And operating budget is about 1.3 million dollars. The county gives us 113,000. We continue to ask them for more funding from the county side. The city just passed 300,000 in last general funds. Thank you for that. We'll continue to ask for more funds there. We are also working with the city of South Fulton to become a member of the land bank. And so they will also pay an annual contribution to do that. So you see, well, how do we make it all work out? Well, one way we could work out is we have to do transactions. So we have a big gap there. So we're actually looking to basically sell $800,000 worth of property this year or do development deals in order to fill the hole or else your land bank will not be operating at the same capacity that it is. So my request is that we look at a long-term fix for this that has probably a multi-year strategy of basically kind of locking in a line item for your land bank going forward that's a little higher than this 300. And also there's a consideration for, in Ohio, the state of Ohio, they actually use the, a unique, interesting way. So if people pay their taxes late, they pay interest. In Ohio, what they've done is they take a portion of that past due interest and they dedicate that to the landbanks. And, and that's how they fund the landbanks in the state of Ohio. Coya Hoga, which is in Cleveland, the county that basically has Cleveland as a, as a city, generates $6 million a year to support their land bank just out of that delinquent increment. And so since we figured this, since that's out of the auspices of a zero-based budget exercise, that may be funds that would be available. So we'll be following up with you to take a look at that as a potential solution for how to fund us going forward also. So just wanted to drop that as something to, to consider. And A report, so we try to take all this information, we put into an A report. This is from 2023. The 2024 is basically being published now. So you'll have that shortly. And that's also on our website. So you can go there. And do want to point out, we did, did not want to let our 30 years go by because under 30 years, 31 years ago, when you created this, we wanted to mark that moment. And so we had a nice celebration in October of last year. President of Center for Community Progress came by. Eloisa Clementic from Invest Atlanta, she came by. Courtney English came by. Folks from the housing, from the mayor's office stopped by. We even had some past board members and a past city council member. So Jared Samples, who used to be on the city council, was on our board when we first started. So he stopped by as well. So a lot of people came by and just witnessed what we've been able to do over the years. And then lastly, I'll just point out that any city in Fulton County can join the land bank by law. Nobody's really taken us up on that until South Fulton is now interested in pursuing becoming a member. It's actually been approved by our board and now is pending action by the county and pending action by the city based on the fact that the city and the county were the two founding members of the land bank itself. Right now is, is sitting with Fulton County. Fulton County Attorney's Office is the person that has to allow that to move forward. If that moves forward, then we basically will expand to pick up additional cities and just transparency. Other Halo cities have asked us about joining East Point, College Park. The Eritropolis cities as well have asked to join, be part of the land bank. And so there will be, if that were to happen, there'll be some political considerations relative to board governance. Because by state law, we only have 11 seats available. There are 15 cities in one county. So that's 16 entities and clearly everybody cannot have a board seat. So that's not something we have to worry about right now, but I'm just kind of letting you know that is something structurally how, how that works. So, so anyway, that brings us through kind of a quick run-by of what has been happening at the land bank in the last year. We'll entertain any questions that you might have based on the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the update. Didn't realize it had been a year. So
Yes.
Pretty robust, but we appreciate it. So I'll start off with Councilmember Backyard.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this thing is like solid. I could slap someone across the face with this. So that's a solid year of information. So thank you. I appreciate your presentation. One of my first questions was about the tax lien piece. So tax liens from properties foreclosed upon by Fulton County. When you say extinguishing past due tax liens, are we looking at, let's say that you had a larger corporation or a hedge fund organization that actually owned those. So we were trying to foreclose upon it and take that. Where you were saying that we would waive tax liens for larger organizations or property owners or negligent property owners with funds that actually had the ability, would we be fining them? How would they be held accountable on, not when it's a situation where it's in probate court, but a situation where you actually have somebody with the means that's intentionally not improving their property?
So let me, great question. So the way it works mechanically is that the tax lien, the extinguishment occurs after that property has been transferred, the ownership has been transferred.
Okay.
So that would mean that any
So they're transferring it with the liens?
Right. So this is someone who basically has walked away from property, has decided as a negligent property owner that they are not going to pay the taxes.
Got it.
Which you find in neighborhoods that basically start deteriorating or people walk away. The tax bill continues to come. They just choose not to pay it. And so now if that property has been lingering two, three, four, five years, which can't happen. And then you say, well, who's going to pay that delinquent lien from another party? And you, as a new owner, want to come in and say you want to do an affordable project and say, well, they just left me a $5 million tax bill. I need to have that money to build a property. Then we can all make a decision. Because remember, the school system actually approves the tax extinguishment too. We can all collectively say it's in the interest of all to extinguish that taxes. But that doesn't mean we have not pursued that party. So the tax commissioner
Okay.
will pursue that party. They will put their property can up for a tax sale. Sometimes properties go for tax sale and they don't, nobody buys them. And you end up basically having a tax lien that now is sitting there.
Okay.
And so what used to happen historically 30 years ago, when this came about, when you had neighborhoods that were basically deteriorating and people were walking away from properties, you had property values that actually sometimes went below the accrued tax lien. So therefore, if that property went to tax sale, let's say for $100,000, but the property was worth $50,000, well, nobody would bid on it. And then it would sit there. And then it stuck. So when they created the tax, the land bank, they said, well, the land bank is the only entity in the state of Georgia that can take their property in, wipe the taxes out, and now allow that property to go back clear. So that was the philosophy behind why that happened. So we cannot extinguish taxes for, we have certain rules. If you created the tax delinquency, we cannot extinguish the taxes for you. You do not get the benefit of being delinquent and retaining ownership. So we don't do that. So I don't want anybody walking away thinking we're rewarding people that are bad actors. We don't. The ones we're talking about with the demolition liens, remember, these are properties that got so bad, the city had to demolish them. It wasn't the owner that did it. The city did it.
Quitting about a 60 to 70,000 dollar lien on the property.
Correct. So now you have a big tax
And I'm serving in, in addition to a clean and close, which is about $30,000.
Exactly. And then you look, put taxes on top of that. So now you have all this stuff sitting on the property and this person has still walked away. So we get involved only to say, okay, we bring us all in and now to get it really clean, do we have to still extinguish taxes? This person's walked away from. So that's how we actually get involved in it. So
And the solicitor's, the solicitor's office is in any degree, any degree involved? Because obviously the city's, we are pursuing blight tax that has to go through the solicitor's office. Are these two things working together? Is it a completely separate system?
We still won't, we don't get involved until those things have actually run their course.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So that stays intact until they can use that as their mechanism for foreclosure. Correct.
Thank you. And one of the things I was concerned about, I brought this up during the blight tax and probate court and the deed cleaning that we're working on doing for certain properties. One of my concerns has been, we have families that are, that are lower income, that might get a property from their family. Loved one passes away, multiple siblings, whatever, or a situation where there was a reverse mortgage, whatever it may be. And they're in probate court. And they're actually trying to get their deed cleaned. They're trying to do it. My concern is the city or any, any organization with, with good intentions coming in, but somehow cleaning that deed and robbing that family, that family member that might be responsible, that's trying to make up and trying to attain that so they can clean up their house and wealth build for their family.
Right.
My concern is, does this impede a homeowner that's actually trying to come back and do the right thing? Does this impede their ability to actually get their home back if they're already in the process of trying to get their deed cleaned?
That's a great question. So there are a few gates that have happened when it gets to this point. That property, so the property is not there anymore, one, the structure. So the structure has deteriorated to the point, if it is a family heirloom, where it had to be demolished.
We're talking about over 50% degradation on the asset.
So that's gone. So now you spent 30,000, whatever, 60,000 to go and demolish it. So that's a lien that's already existing.
Which I believe takes about a year.
And that takes about a year, right?
Given our waitlist.
It takes, and it takes multiple notices. It has to hold it.
Oh, I'm fully aware. Bureaucracy is a special type of hell.
Yeah, you're fully aware, probably more than I am, about the process, right? So you go through all those steps.
Yeah.
And that family is still, should be in some type of notice during that process.
Yes. And this is not on you. My concern is always that bureaucracy is not made to be accessible to people who don't have the privilege to access it because they're
Right.
trying to survive. And so clearly, and this is just a bigger issue of how we do that type of civic education to ensure that the people that are being displaced rapidly and quite frankly, are the roots in the culture of Atlanta. You liquidate that, you lose your whole identity. So yeah, that's something, but that's something to talk more about offline with a few different partners. So thank you. And I was also going to ask, well, actually I just want to make the comment about beautification costs. That's beautiful. You would think that with all the philanthropic money in the city, that you wouldn't have to go to a charitable organization to get $20,000 when, for a lot of people in the city, a lot of philanthropic people in this, in this city, that's, I mean, they could compile that in interest in a week based on the money they have. So I applaud you for that. I would really love to see the philanthropic community step up more to take out that low-hanging fruit because that is absolutely ridiculous. And that, I just, thank you for that work and for allowing those kids to be involved. I have a few people I can, I have, I can call and say a few things to. In terms of the HOA with the STRs, that piece. Is the land bank the acting? I'm a little confused because I am excited about STR regulations. They're desperately needed. We do have bad actors in the city. However, my concern is on capping specifically in these multifamily buildings. And so I know that HOAs are controlled by the state and were preempted. So is there a possibility that whatever HOA you're working with in an affordable housing project would be able to override our STR regulations because they're an HOA?
Don't know the answer to that particular one. I know in this, the HOAs, you're talking about relative to the Park View, is that, that development?
Oh, is that what you're talking about? You're not talking about within the city limits?
No, Park View is in
Park View is technically unincorporated to go.
No, no, no. Ash, the Park View is a development.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the neighborhood. I apologize.
Yeah, not part of the neighborhood. Yes, Park View is the actual development name. I'm sorry. That's the one that's across from the old West Side Park.
Oh, yes.
That's where the HOA came up. We're just paying the HOA because we own it. But no, we're not.
Got it.
We're not involved in that part.
And I have to ask, the deeply affordable piece, I mean, this is all, this is all great. But the deeply affordable piece, one of my big concerns is obviously we're operating that off of HUD. If I look at 120% AMI, if I look at 80% AMI, I cannot afford as a city, as, as a council member with my salary, I can't afford that.
Right.
And so it feels though, based on the HUD definition, it is allowing a lot of people who claim to be good actors. And this is not targeted at the land bank. But it is allowing for certain people to inflate their numbers based on the HUD definition. When I would consider 60 to 80% missing middle and anything below 30%, 40% to be workforce or deeply affordable. And so I guess one of my questions is to you is like, how do we navigate around that? Because I appreciate the Belt Lines numbers. I appreciate these numbers. But to classify that to the Atlanta people, people on the street, employees in this building. And let me be very clear. I always talk about, I don't have, this, this blazer's on a payment plan. So I would be absolutely screwed if I did not have my house. So my question is, how do we navigate that? Because I'm looking at, well, I'm looking at these large agencies that are inflating their numbers, but not legally based on the federal definition. So I don't know how we work around that because it is not your fault. That's the way the market is. But it is gaslighting to our constituency and to people who are trying to move into housing and they like, don't understand it. In your opinion, what would be one way that we could begin tackling that issue?
Sure. No, it's a great question. We've talked about this. One of my board members, Kate Little, who's now off the board. You know, she used to bring this up all the time. That's why we tend to talk more about the 80%. So one of the issues is the way the HUD does this, and this goes way back decades, right? Is that they also sweep in Sandy Springs. So if you look at the AMI for the Atlanta area, it's not just Atlanta. It's actually the surrounding cities. And so therefore you get larger base of salary. And so oftentimes the question is, can we do this on a more geographically specific towards neighborhood level? You know, bring it down to sub, subzones, right? To see what are AMIs within different parts of the city? Because parts of the city, there are disparate levels of income, right?
I mean, District 12 or 11 always being factored in with Buckhead is going to make it
Correct. So you basically end up expanding that. So one thing that was unique, so Augusta, since I'm, you know, I told you I'm a former state president. So we go down Augusta, what they started doing was they started using occupational-based ways to look at things. And they would say, okay, here's the teacher band. Here is the firefighter band. This is the, trying to basically bring it down to where people say, this is what people are making in occupations you see all the time. And that's what we're really trying to figure out. How do we house or bring opportunities to those people? Because it starts bringing it more to reality.
Yeah.
Versus the, versus the numbers of the, you know, you know, we, for instance, when we did the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, that was $6 billion. The FAS came down after the real estate crash. You may not have been on that. But you know, the requirement was it had to be up, up to 120% area meeting income. But that's established at the federal level. And basically that kind of trickles down through every state across the United States. But every state has different, every neighborhood is different. And so I think the one thing that needs to be figured out is statistically, and I was a math guy, so this is a math problem. We need to start figuring out, how do we basically start measuring things on a statistical basis that are more close to the nuance of neighborhoods versus a broad geography of all of your different districts? Because you know, you started doing medians and averages, you know, those are top, bottom, middle. So if you do top, bottom, middle, and you say, skew somebody with a million dollars here, it shoots everything up, right? And that's not what you, you're talking about. I get that one out. I'm really talking about here.
Yeah.
So that is the issue we have from a regulatory perspective is, it's a good conversation to have with HUD. It's a good conversation to say, are there metrics that the city of Atlanta can even come up with on its own? A statistical analysis that it says this is the city of Atlanta AMI versus the HUD AMI. And that may be one to start chipping away at doing that. Because we all go through the beginning of our year, fiscal years, we adopt, push the AMI. Invest Atlanta, Atlanta Housing, the land bank, Belt Line, we all set these numbers. So how do we do that? That would be, that's just my, my opinion on a way
I appreciate that. I'm asking subject matter experts. I appreciate that. I'm asking subject matter experts because it's something I need to learn about. And AMI and like all these things, it's not information that is understandable to the public.
And it's area median income for everybody that's doing the.
Yes, sorry.
And so if you look at median, that's, that's the mathematical formula for how they figure this out.
Right. And I thank you for that. And I will try to wrap my questions quickly.
No.
And I appreciate that answer. And I'd love to talk to you and other folks more offline because that is my Roman Empire. It's one of the things that keeps me up at night. And my next question was on the development piece, with developers that are coming in, trying to make it more accessible to developers of color, et cetera. Is there a way to actually require some of them to do apprenticeship programs with their developments? Just because as I'm looking at missing middle, as I'm looking at that, the, we're being robbed on workforce development. Like our city employees do not live in the city, or workforce employees, DWM, watershed, DPW, like these people can't afford to live in the city. And that's our workforce. And a lack of vocational training and that, I mean, we're going to cut ourselves off at our knees. And I'd rather have a local workforce than talk about taxing Atlanta taxpayers, raising their taxes again before we find other ways to raise our revenues.
So when you say apprentices, mean the developers become apprentice to?
So there are, looking at Savannah, for example, they created something where projects that are coming in above a certain amount, they have to have an apprenticeship program. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to partner with the land bank on that with all the developments that are coming online.
So that is something that is a delicate road to navigate.
Yeah.
So we, as the land bank, we found out, when we tried to have some level of a program for developers and vendors that kind of reflected the city's set aside and inclusion process. We found that we could not do that. So our general, our external general counsel, Rodney Strong, used to be the head of the EEO office under Maynard Jackson. So Rodney's done this for a long time and this got started. But since we had not done a disparity study under the ownership of the land bank, we could not do that and not be sued.
Got it.
The city has done its own disparity study. It can do that for its programs. So there are these nuances of, that's why I say, is you have to navigate these things of how do you basically end up with, particularly in our environment, of not being at a standstill because you're going to get sued into nonexistence. So this is something to.
So basically, I think is I need to get on your calendar for like a two hour coffee. I understand.
Yes, we can go chat.
Thank you. And one of, and I only have two more questions. Fulton County, how is it that they have a larger tax base than us and are paying half of what we contribute to the Metro Atlanta Land Bank? And how are they only paying an inch more than South Union, than, than Union City? I'm sorry, South Fulton.
That's a great question. We've asked them repeatedly. They have, I think part of the issue with the county is that also.
They think they're broken, they're not?
Well, the community development, well, the community development function has been basically assumed by the cities as they've all municipalized and incorporated. And so finding a home in the county that basically speaks to community development is a question we're asking. So that's a question that.
Well, given that we.
Chairman and all that. So I think that's a question that I think would be helpful.
Well, a note to the chairman, thank you for that. A note to the chairman is a reminder that the city approximately spends forty to fifty million dollars a year out of our own budget carrying their water on mental health services and health departments. So I would expect that they actually have some money left over to contribute to keeping their taxpayers in their homes. And on that matter, I also think the Fulton County Development Authority should stop giving out tax breaks to large corporations. But that's a conversation for a different time. But I just wanted, I'll be happy to take up that fight. And I think that they should be aware that they have exceptionally large tax base, much bigger than ours, and that they should be carrying more of their waters because a little over a hundred thousand dollars is absolutely laughable. So I appreciate you being open about that. And my last ask will be for you to please send the information on Ohio because I would love to learn more about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Definitely do that.
And thank you for listening to, for answering my exhaustive list of questions.
And I look forward to having that coffee.
Very long one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, colleague, from colleagues? We were joined by Councilmember Bond and Dozier, just for the record. But seeing all the questions, comments, appreciate you coming in today. Let's not make it a year the next time.
All right. Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So this takes us back to our regular agenda.
Section G Communications, twenty five C zero zero eight two. A communication from Jonathan Gales, PhD, professor and chair of the Department of Africana Studies at Georgia State University, appointed Professor Akonyele Umoshe to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Reparations Study Commission. This item wanting to be held for the appointee to appear.
I'd much to hold our second. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. Item number two, twenty five C zero zero nine zero. A communication from Donald T. Panovi, CPA, Chair Audit Committee, submitting the Performance Audit Report, Beltline SSD Financial Review, twenty twenty five.
All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I hope y'all are having a good afternoon so far. My name is Zoe Geiger and I'm one of the performance auditors who worked on this audit. I worked alongside Tiaja Farrar and under the supervision of Myra Hagley and Christopher Armstead. Today I will be presenting the work performed and the results of the Beltline Special Service District Financial Review. So this is our second review of the Beltline Special Service District, also known as the Beltline SSD. In accordance with ordinance twenty one dash zero dash, I mean, sorry, twenty one dash O dash zero zero four nine, which created the Beltline SSD, the city auditor is to provide a financial review of the district every two years. The first audit was released in twenty twenty two and focused more on the program structures and controls. The second review covers the district's collections and spending from June twenty twenty two to June twenty twenty four. So for this report, we had three objectives. One, how much money has been collected since the inception of the Special Service District and where has the money been spent? Two, are key controls for the program functioning as intended? And three, have the previous audit recommendations been implemented? So for some context, in twenty twenty one, the Atlanta City Council created a Special Service District to help cover the Beltline's budget shortfalls caused by factors such as the two thousand nine recession. The Atlanta Urban Redevelopment Agency, or Aura, issued a ninety five million dollar bond to finance property acquisition and trail construction, which is secured by the Beltline SSD tax levy. Exhibit two on the right shows the projected revenue for the SSD and how it helps fund the Beltline trails alongside other sources. Atlanta Beltline Incorporated, or ABI, can only spend bond proceeds in the areas where the SSD and the urban redevelopment area overlap. Exhibit four on the right depicts these areas along the trail segments, highlighting the SSD in pink and the urban redevelopment area in blue. In addition to these geographic restrictions, the use of SSD bonds, bond proceeds is restricted to engineering, utility relocation, construction, ADA accessibility and safety features like lighting and cameras. So this slide shows an overview of our findings. During this audit, we found that SSD collections have exceeded consultant projections from twenty twenty one and annual debt service requirements. The majority of bond proceeds have been spent on three trails, the South Side, West Side and Northwest Trails. Based on our review, ABI has appropriate invoicing and requisition controls in place. And finally, almost all recommendations from our previous SSD audit were implemented. Since the tax was levied, SSD revenue has increased each year. As shown in exhibit six on the slide, the city collected three point two million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty two, six point six million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty three, and seven point six million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty four. The SSD has also collected thirty six thousand dollars in interest and penalty payments in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. As of June twenty twenty four, seventeen point five million dollars in SSD revenue have been collected. As demonstrated in exhibit seven on the left, according to the four point five appreciation projection, the SSD levy was not set to collect seven point seven million dollars until fiscal year twenty twenty nine. However, this amount was almost met in fiscal year twenty twenty four. This means that based on consultant projections, the SSD collections are about five years ahead of schedule. Additionally, according to the bond document, Aura must set aside five point three million dollars from collections in debt reserve fund to ensure bond repayment. If the tax generates more revenue than needed for a given year's bond repayment, Aura can move the excess collections to a discretionary fund, which can then be used to pay extra project costs or pay the bond off early. As of March twenty twenty four, generated tax revenue was more than enough to repay bond obligations. However, no SSD revenue had been moved to the discretionary fund at that time. As of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, ABI has spent sixty seven point one million dollars of the bond proceeds to construct trail segments on the South Side, Northwest and West Side Trails. Exhibit nine on the left shows the construction phases for each Beltline Trail. And as shown in exhibit eight on the right, at that time, there was about twenty million left of the eighty eight point one million dollar bond proceeds. Although none of the trail segments have been completed, ABI staff projects that the in-progress trail segments will be completed by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty six. We also reviewed ABI's vendor invoice payment process to determine whether controls were in place to ensure that the SSD bond proceeds were spent appropriately. For the purposes of this audit, we randomly sampled thirty invoices for services completed between January twenty twenty four and February twenty twenty five. From our review, we found that all invoices complied with guidelines for allowable expenses and that all payment requisitions showed consistent documentation for work performed and documentation of approvals. So in our twenty twenty two report, we issued four recommendations. In this report, we found that three of those four were fully implemented. First off, a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, was created to define roles and responsibilities between ABI, Aura and Invest Atlanta. We also found that written policies and procedures were updated to include Special Service District language. Additionally, the chart of accounts was updated to reflect SSD information. Finally, we found that the fourth recommendation to include a comprehensive reporting framework in the MOU was partially implemented. While ABI has developed a reporting framework, we found that quarterly presentations to city council lacked SSD-specific data such as tax collections, project completion status and discretionary fund details. The council needs detailed information regarding the SSD to support decision-making and mitigate the risk of excess collections. So this informed our one audit recommendation, which is to ensure that city council has detailed information for decision-making. So the city, the chief operating officer should work with Invest Atlanta and ABI to report tax collections compared to projections over the life of the bond, total bond funds spent to date, percentage completion for projects funded by the Special Service District, total amount in the discretionary fund for prepayment and for project costs, along with the amount and type of expenses. The COO, ABI and Invest Atlanta all agreed with our recommendation and ABI has already started working with Invest Atlanta to include SSD, relevant SSD information in future presentations. We would like to thank Atlanta Beltline Incorporated and Invest Atlanta staff for their cooperation and support during this time. And I will now turn it over to our city auditor, Amin Nobile, for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate the presentation and we'll go with questions from colleagues. I'll start with Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just the only question that I have is recognizing that the SSD is significantly ahead of schedule of course, what was originally projected for as far as revenues. What does the legislation or the agreements that we have with the Beltline contemplate as far as, once we get to the point where we need to sunset the SSD, what happens to excess revenues? Since, does that go back to taxpayers? Can that be spent on other SSD-related items that may not necessarily have been contemplated in initial legislation? But I'm curious about that.
Yeah. Okay. So the excess revenue can be used to pay the bond, the debt service early, or it can be used for other project costs?
And other project costs being whatever was defined in the authorization.
In the legislation, so it'd be related to the Beltline.
Okay. Thank you. That's really all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No question, just a word of appreciation. This is the third audit presentation that I've sat through today. And I just want to say thank you to you and your team for all the work that you're doing.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
I will echo that sentiment. And I also just want to say I'm so glad that we now have a full team with you all in the auditor's office. And I, although we should give you more, but I'm very grateful to you all. And the fact that you were able to do a lot of this without a full team. So thank you, Ms. Noble. And to the rest of your, and to the rest of the team as well.
All right. Thank you. I did have a question in your conversations with the Beltline. Obviously, they've agreed to your recommendations and I've actually seen them start to report more on the SSD, being that I'm on their boards. I'm seeing that more in their presentations now. Just curious, was there an explanation about why they haven't decided to put any excess funds in a discretionary fund account? Or kind of like some of the uses of that going forward?
I am not sure. I think, I mean, they haven't had a lot of opportunity to have excess fund yet. So the issue is just now arising.
Okay. Got it. Understood. Any other questions, comments? And then we appreciate it. So we do have to accept and file this piece of legislation. So I will make a motion to accept and file. It's over second by Dozier. You can please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This is accepted and filed.
Thank you.
That takes us to our consistent agenda. Twenty five oh fourteen twelve. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor to accept a Brownsville Community-Wide Assessment Grant from the United States Environmental Protection Agency in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents for the assessment of Brownsville sites across the city of Atlanta to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the twenty twenty six intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to authorize the mayor or his designate to enter into any necessary agreements in connection with the grant and for other purposes. Twenty five oh fourteen thirteen. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Department of City Planning to waive chapter two, article, article eight, division one, section two dash nine ten, to retroactively authorize and ratify the City of Atlanta's submission of an application for the large creative fund grant from the Spruil Center for the Arts in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars and zero cents to be utilized for artistic enhancement of a community garden through Atlanta's Growzalot Initiative and for other purposes. Twenty five oh fourteen fourteen. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Ainsley Park Neighborhood Conservation Study to amend the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, Plan A, by incorporating the reference said plan, reference said study and for other purposes. Twenty five oh fourteen fifteen. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the P. Mount Heights Master Plan to amend the City of Atlanta's Comprehensive Development Plan, Plan A, by incorporating the reference said plan and for other purposes. That takes us to our regular agenda. Twenty five oh thirteen eighty nine. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Department of City Planning to waive chapter two, article nine, division one, section two dash nine ten, to retroactively authorize and ratify the City of Atlanta's submission of an application for the twenty twenty five program grant from Georgia Humanities in an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents to be utilized for a publicly presented author talk to authorize the mayor or his designate to accept the award of grant funds, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the FY twenty twenty five intergovernmental grant fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents to authorize the mayor or his designate to enter into any necessary agreements in connection with the grant, to authorize the Department of City Planning to allocate funds for the local match in an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars and zero cents and for other purposes.
Thank you. Any questions from colleagues on this one? We have a motion to approve. Our second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Twenty five oh fourteen zero one. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Elboom to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Warnesses, chapter one ten, section one ten dash three, article two, to allow for swim lessons for youth from low-income households at all city-owned pools and auditoriums on a regular basis and for other purposes.
Colleagues, there was a substitute that we all received on this. So we have a motion to bring forth the substitute, second by Councilmember Westmoreland. If you can please open the vote.
Mr. Chair, can I read the new substituted caption?
Please.
An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Elboom as substituted by Community Development and Human Services Committee to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Warnesses, chapter one ten, section one ten dash three, subsection F two, concerning fees to be paid to the city for swim lessons to provide that there shall be no fee imposed for swim lessons for city. for swim lessons to provide that there shall be no fee imposed for swim lessons for city resident youth under the age of 18 at city-owned pools and auditoriums and for other purposes.
Colleagues, I spoke with the author. She stuck out, she stepped out for a moment. She would like us to hold this, but she's very eager for us to find a solution to some of this going forward.
Yes. We can bring forth the substitute first, please. The vote is open. The substitute hasn't been entered into AMs yet. That's why it's showing like that. But it is in your committee packet. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you.
We have a motion to hold. I'll second. Please open the vote.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. That takes us to item number nine, 25-01403. We have a motion to bring forth the substitute as the caption changes.
We have a motion by Bakhtiari, second by Councilmember Westmoreland. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. 25-01403, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond as substituted by Community Development and Human Services Committee to amend Part Three, Land Development Code, Part Twenty, Short-Term Rentals, to add a short-term rental license requirement for multifamily complexes and for other purposes.
Thank you. I have a question from Commissioner Prince Art, Ms. Sittifal, just about the enforcement So currently, do you see this being a strain, or do we have to come up with new rules and regulations around trying to enforce these new requirements?
Well, we have actually proposed the idea of an umbrella license for multifamily properties in the draft of the STR that the Law Department is currently reviewing, so the timing is especially good, and we look forward to hearing from the Law Department about this.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. I mean, the substitute does fix all the things I was concerned, main things I was concerned about, allowing for renewal of current licensing, doesn't grandfather in anyone with an STR, but just says with the current license, is that correct? With the substitute?
I think so, yes.
And the substitute, I believe.
I don't know. Councilmember Bond, that?
I guess what I'll say is the substitute improves things greatly. I don't think a lot of us have had the opportunity to really get it, and given that we've been doing STRs for so long, and I'm really grateful to Councilmember Bond for bringing this word, because we have to tackle it. And I'm respectfully asking if the author would consider holding for one cycle, just so we can iron out some additional details. Just one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Well, my concern about holding it is that we're about to go on recess. So we're not going to meet again until the, as a body, until the middle of August, and we have been inundated by residents, particularly those at the Landmark, that they needed some immediate relief from their situation. So I would hope that we would not hold it, given the fact that there is a huge gap in time between now and when this committee would meet again. It would be near the end of August. And so if there are issues that might need to be worked on, and we can forward the paper on to the main body, and if those things haven't been addressed by our next meeting, then perhaps we can send it back or hold it in the breast of council, but I'd like to see it advanced.
Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bond, for that comment. I have a couple of thoughts. I share Councilmember Bakhtiari's desire to hold this, and I'm happy to second that motion, if that was a motion. You know, we have a short-term rental ordinance that Mayor Dickens and I introduced that has yet to be enforced, and so part of my concern, well, I have philosophical questions about the 10% cap, and then if we were to pass this today, and if it were to pass full council on August 14th, are we going to enforce it? Because we're not enforcing what we've had for four years, and so that seems like that's giving false hope or misinformation and misrepresentation to members of the public, which all just kind of comes back to the fact that I think we need to hold this for a little bit longer.
Councilmember Bond.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember, but I respectfully disagree. The fact that there hasn't been any enforcement isn't the fault of the city council, that rests with the administration. So we've listened to residents, those from the Landmark in particular, that have come down here now for almost six months and have been asking for relief. And so what's contained in this ordinance with the update from the Law Department basically is what's been, as the commissioner pointed out, what's being considered in the overall ordinance. You know, we did something similar with the Tree Ordinance that was filled with a lot of acrimony and pain, that we took out a part that wasn't in dispute, that wasn't being debated in the hinterlands of the city, and we peeled it out to help to aid the public. And so this is what this effort is doing. You know, legislation is written on paper, it's not written on stone, not written in stone. We can advance this paper today, and all of the concerns, whatever meetings or conversations that need to be had over the next month, or perhaps the next six weeks, that can take place as the paper advance. I think it becomes incumbent upon us when the public comes down and screams for relief. You know, we're not an enforcement body. We're a legislative body, and they've asked us for some legislative relief, and this is an attempt to provide that relief. Now, whether or not it gets to be enforced, that's incumbent upon us to lean on the administration to enforce the ordinances that we pass. And I believe that taking this action is a demonstration of that, that we want to see our laws enforced, that we want to see something done at that, particularly at that location, but perhaps in other locations around the city where there has been no enforcement. And so the fact that there really hasn't been any enforcement of the STR is another conversation, but when someone yells and points to a fire, right, and say, hey, I need the fire department to come, we don't sit around and debate and say, well, you know, maybe, maybe it's only a little fire. Maybe it's only a fire in the bush. Maybe it's only a fire in the backyard. You know, we, we have an obligation to respond, and that's what this legislation is, and I hope that you all will reconsider your position and advance the paper so that we can send a clear signal, not only to our citizens, but to those in the administration, that we want to see something done on behalf of our citizenry.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
I'm happy to say that Councilmember Bond and I are very much on the same side of this issue. My concern is just now when I was reading the substitute and asking questions, that it doesn't seem that any of us are well-versed on it, and I have an issue, and I think we've made a poor practice of blindly voting things through, and I don't know about you all, but as to the point that Councilmember Bond brought up, that this operation's fault of the administration, I would like a briefing from them to understand how they actually plan on doing this, because I personally am very tired of passing legislation that is not perfectly, that is not well-thought-out and has the details ironed out, because I don't feel like being put in front of a firing squad again, let me be very honest with you. It's just, I don't think this council should have to do that. I think we're the most forward-facing agency, and I think we deserve to understand how this will be implemented and done well, rather than us throwing something out to the public saying it's going to happen and then not being able to enforce it. I think operations are very important. We are the legislative body, but we have to understand how this is going to operate. And like I said, I think the substitute improved this immensely. I don't think we're quite there yet. I think we're very close, but I also want to, I mean, I also want to ask, does anyone know how, has any idea how many units currently have and don't have licenses? Because it doesn't seem I've been able to get accurate information on that from anyone, and I would think that information is vital to passing this legislation.
I don't have our STR software in front of me to look that up for you.
Okay. And I do want to ask, though, because Landmark is in my district, and I've been working on this quite a bit, is how, if this legislation is passed, will this be able to affect management of the Landmark?
This legislation requires what is essentially an umbrella license for the entire building. So it would be the homeowners' association or condos association that would apply for the license. So we, we put it that same way in the STR that we have drafted for legal review. So same idea, good idea. I think in the case of the Landmark, where from what I've heard, there are fewer resident owners there.
Less than 10.
Yes, and the vote would be done within the condo association. For anybody who lives in a condo, you know how, has lived in a condo, you know how this works. The condo association would vote to decide if they wanted to get the umbrella license and then apply for the license.
Yes. Thank you for that. And also, I want to take a moment to thank you, Commissioner, and your team for working on this. I know we still have a long way to go, but I do want to just really thank y'all for all the work you've been putting into this and commend you on that. So I just want to first point that out. But what I also want to say is, to those who don't know the background, with the Landmark specifically, the people that are running folks out are the same ones that are the head of the HOA, which we know is controlled, legis, any type of regulation on HOA is dictated by the state. So even if we pass this on Monday, they could turn around and decide to override the city's regulation, is my understanding. And I want to give them relief, but if that is the case, then we need to better educate the occupants there, have a better understanding of that, because if we pass this Monday and I don't understand, and that HOA turns around and does something, that's going to be sloppy legislative work on my part. And so I have to fully understand and get a full briefing from you all if the problem property owners are the head of the HOA. It seems to me that means they can still circumnavigate this legislation. An HOA would be able to override us, correct? Because they are preempted by the state.
What we need to do is spend some time with the legislation that we have drafted that is just a little more comprehensive, but does contain the same provision, which is a very good provision.
Got it.
Sneak preview, 10% on the multifamily units.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is no meeting on Monday. We're going on break. I apologize for that. Let me not tell you guys that. Thank you, Councilmember Dozier, for updating me on what day, what the date was.
But, Councilmember Bakhtiari, we'd be happy to brief you.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
And so, yes, I would, I would, yeah, well, I've spoken to that, and I again thank you all, and I again thank the author of this paper for bringing this word. I just want to make sure that we get it right, so.
So we have a motion to hold. We have a second, and before we answer that, I know that, before we get into that vote, I would just add that, from my perspective, I realize that we're trying to solve a problem that's happening that seems to be very serious at a specific location in District Five, but for me, I don't have enough information put forth before me to see how this affects my district, and this is something that's going to affect citywide. And so as it stands right now, without having enough information, I can't in good faith vote to approve something that's going to affect other districts besides one specific location. So that's why I will be supporting the hold this motion as well. I'm sorry.
Yeah. The, the other piece of this with short-term rentals is that there are some good operators who have special guest, who, special performance performers at the Symphony and at the Alliance Theater, and they are very involved, and they have wanted to be a part of the final conversations about the short-term rental, because it could impact our ability to have top-quality performers come in who need a short-term rental if they are doing a series of performances. And that, those, those individuals contacted me months ago and just said, before we do something, we want to show how this works when people do obey the rules and it is done very well and effectively. So that is another reason for me to want to, that I'm supporting my colleague in holding it. Let's make sure we are not throwing out something that really is very helpful to Atlanta in this arena.
Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to further state that this legislation is, if not a direct lift, is derivative from the STR legislation that's currently held in committee. It is not an alternative, it's not a different idea, it's not a 180-degree turn from what is already on the table. This is what has been in Mr. Amos's legislation the entire time. So this isn't something new or untried, or something that is pulled out of the air, that needs to be, have its tires kicked. As the commissioner has pointed out, this is a very good provision for addressing what should happen in multifamily and condos or multifamily buildings. This isn't anything that anyone in the city need fear of. You know, it's not anything that's going to harm anyone's district, it's not going to harm District One, or District Ten, or District Nine, or whatever. You know, we have heard directly from citizens that want some relief. Now, apparently, there are other issues with the STR that have not allowed it to come forward, because it was on the same track almost as the Tree Ordinance. They were trending along the same lines, and so the Tree Ordinance got advanced and pruned, pardon the pun, and parts of it got moved forward. This is in the same spirit. There's real, there is no reason to hold this paper. All of the answers that we seek, all the consultation that people have, want to request, is still available to you if the paper advances. We have another opportunity when the, if the paper comes before the council. If satisfaction is not reached at that point, then the opportunity is there to refer it back. And I tell you, I would make the motion myself if people are unready. But I think at a certain point, when citizens come down and literally beg you for action, beg you to do something, right? That those of us who are elected ought to do something. We ought not sit on our hands and say, well, you know, I'm still not ready, it's still not this, still not that. You know, I've been around here a long time, and I've seen a lot of stuff go down, and I've seen a lot of people come down here in the way of citizens and have to beg us for help, and they should not. Now, if this turns out to be nothing more than a gesture, then it's a gesture that ought to be made. If it gets to the, the main council meeting and gets held in the breast or referred back here, you know, the gesture still ought to be made. I mean, I can't be the only person that sits here and hears the pleas of these folks, right? Other than Mr. Bakhtiari, it's her district, that doesn't want to do something, and doesn't think that the people who serve with us and who serve on the other side of the aisle with us are not capable of solving this problem. Holding this paper sends the wrong message to our community. It sends the wrong message to our citizenry citywide. It says that, almost like, and I hate to do this to you, Commissioner, but talking about the Tree Ordinance, when people couldn't get what they wanted out of the Tree Ordinance, you know, people didn't understand why we held it, people didn't understand why there was him and then her, and people didn't understand why there wasn't any... And people didn't understand why there wasn't any real movement on it. And it's the same with this. This is exactly, if I had been in school and had copied this legislation off the original STR, I would have got caught for cheating off someone's paper. It's almost exact, it is almost exactly the same, except for, except for the edits and the, and the minor improvements from the Law Department that, that cleaned it up again. There's no difference. So we shouldn't pretend that. I'm asking you, urging you to vote, either withdraw the motion to hold or vote it down. It's time to demonstrate to the public that we're here for service. And we're also responsible, even though we work in tandem with the administration, that we're also responsible for oversight of the administration. And so if there hasn't been adequate enforcement, we're the ones responsible to urge them, to put our, to, to cajole them to have the enforcement and to do it at this moment. There's no reason to hold this paper. So I implore you again, please withdraw the motion to hold, and then let's vote this forward. And if you, if you don't want to withdraw the motion, those who didn't, who are not a part of the maker and seconder, please vote the motion to hold down, and let's advance this on behalf of the people who literally come down here and plead with us for some action, you know, on their behalf. And then, you know, what the Commissioner, and I'll say this in our close, what the Commissioner described, even if the HOA is responsible for applying for the license, it's only 10% of the units that could get it. Right now, according to what we've heard from the owners and the people who come down here to complain, that building, the Landmark, is rife with STR units, right? It's rife with them. You know, up and down on every floor. It's like, it's like a, a hotel. It's not even a place to live anymore. So even if the, the folks that we don't like get the license, only 10% of the people in the building can do it. Because it's, you, you have to live there and have one other unit, correct? Right? When you got an STR license, you can only have one other unit. And so that cuts out all the investors, that cuts out all, a lot of the, maybe not cut out all of it, but it cuts off, it cuts out a substantial amount of the nonsense that goes on in that building. I'm, I'm asking you, you know, I, I don't beg for myself, but I'm begging for these people. Let's move this paper. Let's demonstrate and show them something, you know? Let's do something. Because the, the message that we send is not only, it might, you know, someone said, well, it might be false encouragement. It's not false encouragement when you do what the community asks you to do. Okay? And so it also sends a message to those who would do wrong, right? It sends a message to those who, who might do wrong, that they need to get their act together. That it's someday, there's a reckoning coming from the City of Atlanta that we're not going to allow our invested residents, residents to be plagued upon by commercial opport, you know, obscene commercial opportunity. So I, I hope that, you know, that we would move this and, you know, I, I just really frankly wasn't expecting this. You know, I hope that we will move it. But I, you know, I'm going to withdraw.
So we do have a motion and a second on the table. Unless there are any other comment or questions, colleagues, seeing none? Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, two nays, one abstention. The item is held in committee.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate Councilmember Bond speaking for the people in my district. What I also say is I've been heavily involved in this for three and a half years, and there are complications here that are not being addressed. And while I want to fight for them, what I will not do is pass something performative that cannot be enforced and lie to my constituency and give them false hope. I will ensure, I will ensure, because they are the head of, because they are the head of the HOA, because they're, the problematic property owners are the head of the HOA and therefore cannot be stopped until proper investigations are done, this will not stop them from being bad actors. And what this city has to get in the habit of doing is not passing things that cannot be upheld, performative in nature, without execution. And as the representative for this area, I will not continue to extend performative actions. I will ensure that we understand the operations of this, so I can explain it to my constituency. And I will not carry out performative actions without execution for my constituency. And I will be transparent with them in the process, but I will understand it. I will carry it out properly, and this is not the end. It's simply a break until August, and it will pass forward. We have to ensure we get this right, because we have the privilege of looking at Atlanta through an eagle's eye point of view, and we are making decisions that are going to affect our constituency for decades to come in unprecedented times. And what I will not do is vote through something I do not understand that is this impactful. And I will not, absolutely will not, give my constituency false hope when they are dealing every day with a very dangerous situation that I am fully informed on and that I'm very involved with to the degree that I cannot speak about publicly because there's ongoing investigations. But I am very involved, and the passage of this bill today will not stop what is happening in the Landmark, because the problem property owners are the head of the HOA. And they can be preempt, they cannot be preempted. So that has to be handled first. And in the meantime, we will get this right, because passing this will not, today, will not change the conditions of that problematic property. And so therefore, we will not be rushed, and we'll get this right, and when we come back from break. Thank you.
Councilmember Bond.
Thank you. I'd like to explain my vote. Obviously, I, I see things differently than other members of the community. But I want to remind the public that you don't just have one council member for your area, you have four, right? You have your district representative and three at large. So myself, Mr. Westmoreland, and Ms. Collins, our districts are the entire city, okay? So people should have legislative coverage and protection throughout. And they, you have the right to call and involve any member of the council, but particularly your at-large members when you're dealing with the situation. And Ms. Bakhtiari, I'm sorry she left, but she's absolutely right. This legislation isn't going to do anything for the Landmark, because it was held. Because it was held here today. You know, we're all intelligent people. We're all smart people who have been put here to represent the citizens of Atlanta. Any question that needs to be answered or sought, in my experience, and it is extensive on this body, is that you can get those answers literally by picking up the phone and calling any person in city government to be reassured. But people who live underneath stressful situations that we have the power to resolve, to tell them to wait, to me, is unacceptable. It's unacceptable. And I think it's, you know, there's an old African proverb, when elephants fight, it's the grass that suffers. And the grass has definitely suffered in the, in the Landmark today.
Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to explain my vote real quick. One thing I've shared with Commissioner Prince, with the administration, with Amstra, with community members who are concerned about the future of short-term rents in the city. I'm a, I've been a strong believer that the existing short-term rental legislation is strong. It was thoughtfully crafted. It was, the, the body that created and adopted it did a remarkable job putting it together. I just want to see it enforced. And I want to continue to lean on this administration and Department of City Planning and the Office of Buildings to enforce the legislation that we already have and to make sure that any sort of changes that we're thinking about with regards to the, the ordinance and the code is done after we've gone to, gone to battle with the bad actors who are in our city. If we get sued, we get sued, get in line, but I want to enforce the legislation we currently have. So I just want to put that on the record. Thank you. Thank you.
That takes us to item number 10, 2501405, ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland to amend ordinance 2401691, the tree protection ordinance adopted by the City Council of the City of Atlanta on June 16, 2025, by amending the effective date and for other purposes.
I have a motion to hold. I will second.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. That takes us to Section J, Resolutions, 25R3661, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis, authorizing the chief financial officer or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta in pursuant to Section 1-102C7 of the City of Atlanta's Charter to accept a donation of funds from trust for public land in an amount not to exceed $200,000.00 toward Atlanta's section of the proposed Chattahoochee Riverlands and the Chattahoochee Brick Study and for other purposes.
I have a motion to approve by Westmoreland. I will second. Can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number 12, 25R3662, a resolution by Councilmembers Esha Collins, Michael Julian Bond, and Matt Westmoreland to establish the Derrick Bolesman Legacy Commission to honor his contributions as a community leader, writer of personality, advocate for equity, education, youth empowerment, and civic activism, and for other purposes.
I'd like to make a, to amend this to add my name to it. Any other colleagues? Do we have a second? Oh. We're adding Winston, Dozier, Bakhtiari. We had a second by Dozier.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays. This item has been amended. May we have a motion to? Can we have a second? The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable as amended. That takes us to item number 13, 25R3666, a resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amis, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Department of City Planning to accept the Livable Centers Initiative Study Grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission in order to conduct an LCI study in the Ashby Martyr Station Transit Area to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute any required grant documents and to enter into any necessary agreements with ARC related thereto and for other purposes.
Ms. Rosseto.
Good, good afternoon, councilmembers. As stated, the purpose of this legislation is to allow the Department of City Planning to execute sub-grant agreements related to the Ashby Martyr LCI grant with the Atlanta Regional Commission. In order to move forward with the procurement process, the city needs to be able to execute these legal documents that are related to the grant and its administration. And there will be further legislation to officially accept, allocate, and spend the funding to begin work for this project.
I have a motion to approve. I will second. Can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number 14, 25R3730, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Atlanta Beltline on behalf of the Department of City Planning for the purpose of utilizing portions of 1150 Ellene Avenue Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30310, Fulton County, text parcel ID listed as an urban farm and for other purposes.
This legislation needs to be amended to attach the MOU. So we have a motion to amend. We have a second. Motion was by Westmoreland, second was by Bakhtiari.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item has been amended.
Thank you. Ms. Bar, tell us what's happening with this legislation.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Whitney Bar. I'm the Food Systems Project Manager, representing our Food Systems Team within the Department of City Planning. Let me take a deep breath.
Take your time.
So the purpose of this legislation is establish an MOU between the Atlanta Beltline and Department of City Planning in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience. What we are looking to do is to use this previously used farm, which is the Beltline Farm 1150 Ellene Avenue, as part of the Department of City Planning's Growzalot Program. So through this MOU process, once we have this establishment, we would love to bring this property into our program in order to offer technical assistance, onsite food production, as well as green workforce development.
Great. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Is this, and second, is this involving the Urban Ag Department at all?
So we don't have a Urban Ag Department, but we have a cross-functional.
I believe, under, under Mr. Jaolu, under DCP, correct?
DCP, so the Aglana Initiative at large is comprised of DCP and the Mayor's Office of Sustainability.
Thank you.
So, so we had a motion to approve as amended, and we had a second by Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Can you repeat the mover and seconder, please?
Westmoreland, mover.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable as amended. That takes us to Section K, paper's held in committee. Our first one is.
Can we take items 21, 27, and 32 as a block?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
One moment. Item number 21, 2501074, CDP 25004, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to re-designate property located at 383 Lanier Street Northwest from the high-density residential 0-16 units per acre land use designation to the high-density residential land use designation and for the purposes. Item number 27, 2501263, CDP 25006, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to re-designate property located at 481, 485, and 495 Westlake Avenue Northwest, 1595, 1607, 1617, 1625 North Avenue Northwest, 1590, 1600, 1618, 1621, and 1626 Hasty Place Northwest, 480 and 492 Elmwood Road Northwest from the low-density residential for 0 to 8 units per acre land use designation to the low-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Item number 32, 2501268, CDP 25016, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to re-designate property located at 335 Sawtail Avenue Southeast from the medium-density residential land use designation to the mixed-use low-density land use designation and for other purposes.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'll make a motion to file these. They were part of the CDP that just recently passed.
One moment.
Okay.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is. These items have been filed. That takes us to item number 38, 25R3590, a resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amis, requesting the City of Atlanta Department of City Planning to develop a seniors' own designation to promote age-friendly infrastructure, accessible housing, and safer communities for seniors in the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Councilmember Amis, in the back, are you speaking to this item?
Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Byron Amis, Atlanta City Council, District Three. I am asking for this committee to pass this paper forward, so our very capable planning department can get to work to see what they can come up with. I'm here to answer any possible questions that you may have about the paper.
Any questions, comments, Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Well, first motion to approve. Second, I was going to ask, this is, thank you for doing this, councilmember. I just, at some point, after City Planning, would love to find out how we're going to enforce and make sure that this is abided by, but I appreciate it, and again, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, a second by Councilmember Westmoreland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
That takes us to Section L, walk-in legislation, MSID 38396, a resolution by, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate an amount not to exceed $150,000.00 to House Proud Atlanta pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta Charter, to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute a donation agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to make the donation payment from the account listed herein, and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, Councilmember Westmoreland.
I'll second your motion to approve. Is anyone here able to speak to this paper? All right, well, in the absence of anybody, I'll articulate that it's, after hearing several times in the spring and early summer, that the Housing Trust Fund was empty. I'm relieved to see that it's not, and look forward to using it for this and future papers.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yeah, thank you. Echo Councilmember Westmoreland. Would love to understand the impetus, although, I mean, this organization is extraordinary, but would just like to have a better understanding of the impetus behind it, given the information that has been shared repeatedly about the Housing Trust Fund, so just a little confused. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to approve. There's a second on that.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to our next walk-in paper, MSID 38401, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee, requesting that Fulton County continue supporting vital affordable housing and community-focused redevelopment efforts, participating in the West Side Tax Allocation District and for other purposes.
Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to approve this piece of legislation, and I want to make a comment that last week, the Fulton County Commission discussed a resolution that would have paused the county's involvement in the West Side TAD, and frankly, attempted to pull it out completely, which I think is legally questionable. But regardless, the West Side TAD has done a great deal of work over the last many years to help fund affordable housing and community redevelopment initiatives on Atlanta's west side. Want to acknowledge that Councilmember Bond actually authored the creation of this TAD during his first tour of duty on council, and I am hopeful that the county will continue to participate in this TAD and all the good work that it does, and I think that it's important that council send that message collectively. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Councilmember Bakhtiari, with the second.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That brings us to the end of our legislative items.
Parting words, comments from colleagues. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Just a reminder to folks that the Public Service Commission race, the final race, is today. It is not a race that you've probably heard very well, but it's actually one of the most influential races in the state of Georgia. This is a position that sets our utility rates. Please, 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 show up, vote for whoever you want to be your nominee, and please vote again in the final election, because this does dictate our utility rates and a number of other things that affect our day-to-day lives. Yes, so, and obviously, I'll let the chair make the announcement about next week.
Yes, so just a, another reminder that we will be on recess, all of councils, so we will see you again August 4th at our full council meeting. Thank you all. We stand adjourned.